Yeah, here we go. She's Catholic.
All right.
Let's say pledge allegiance to the flag.
There we go. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
The public has left us.
They have.
Mr. Bean's still here.
Bruce is away, so I am going to run the meeting. And we have the minutes, February 4th.
I would make a motion to accept the minutes as presented.
I second that.
Any discussion? All right, a vote? All those in favor?
In favor, yes.
Okay. Warrants, Dennis?
You got it. Two warrants, 34 and 35. 34 is basically the regular warrant. If you want to take a look at 34, there's information here on the front of the summary. On the back is 34 and 35, what we're used to seeing. You can see that they are consistent with payroll and also accounts payable. If you take a look on the next page, you can see the check register. Just some information, because there are going to be a couple of numbers that jump out at you. The 14, 633-72, which is a nice big chunk of money, is for H.E. Callahan Construction. That is from the Moranoke Dam. So that's nothing that is out of the ordinary or was supposed to be a surprise or ended up being a surprise. You can see Maine Municipal Association, I believe, is for dues. Is that what that is?
That's correct.
Okay. And that's about it. Anything else that stands out? You can see again on the next page, this again, warrant 34 on the back, what's included in that. It's the same amount that Callahan Construction. Anything else that I'm trying to think of looks out of the ordinary, but you can see...
I have one question for you.
Yeah.
$400 to Kents Hill School. Oh, now I'm seeing the details. For basketball?
Yep. Jim Rendell.
Aha. Thank you.
So, I would make a motion for the board. I will make a motion for the board to accept warrants 34 and 35 in the total amount of $55,148 and nine cents.
I'll second that.
Okay, all of those in favor? Select Board Communications?
I just want to say, if I can, please help us out. We talked a lot about Heritage Days, and if you're interested in helping this be the best Heritage Days ever, please let us know. You can find out information on the Town of Reedfield Facebook page. You can email me, DPrice@Winthrop... Winthrop Schools. That's my job. You can email me there. DPrice@ReedfieldMaine.org. Or you can stop by the town and fill out a volunteer form. We're looking for folks to help us organize and plan. We're looking for organizations to help us organize and plan and help us be a part of their marketing strategy. And we're also looking for folks to help us with the day of. We're going to need lots of various people to help us. We're looking for officials for our kickball game, and we're looking for officials for our cornhole tournament. So, all kinds of fun things going on that day, and we'd love for you to be a part of it. So, thank you.
I'd just like to say that we just concluded a meeting with the chairs of different boards, committees, and commissions. And it was an informative meeting where everyone shared what has been going on over the last year, the highlights, and their plans for the coming year. And I would like to thank everyone for coming and doing that. I'd also like to remind people that Robin Lindt is retiring, and her last day is on March 1st. And the town office is having an open time. Eric, can you give us the details?
Yeah, noon until 3:30. We'll be having something of a reception at the town office, kind of a going away. So if you want to say, I think what I said before was hello, goodbye, or thank you, limited to mostly those things, it would be great if people could come by. We'll have snacks and just some time to send Robin away on her fine retirement.
And that's Friday, March 1st.
Friday, March 1st.
Then I'm good.
Okay.
Thank you.
Staff reports.
All right. It's an off-meeting for my town manager's report, but I'll just give a brief update that we are really busy with the budget process. We have a lot happening around that, a lot of planning happening for work, not this spring and next year, but I guess those are two things together. We're doing a lot of work this spring for this current year budget and expenditures, but we're also planning ahead for next year. And so that's been quite a lot of effort and time put into that. As you said, Robin is retiring, and we have our new clerk in, starting first day today. So Deb Nichols has started, and we're very pleased to have her on board. I think she's going to do fantastic work for us as she had in the past. And the winter maintenance has been also another large component of what we're working on. We have struggled a little bit with the ice, but I don't know anybody who hasn't in this part of the state this year. But we're continuing to keep an eye on things and try to keep the banks down. We're trying to work with the DOT to make sure that we are sharing some of the responsibilities around areas like Reedfield Corner and just trying to keep things safe. So we definitely appreciate folks calling, letting us know if there are issues, so we can address them quickly before anything happens. So always feel free to call us if there's an issue. I'll just go into my treasurer's report, and this is for the month of January. We have completed the check reconciliation through January 31st, 2018, and our accounts are imbalanced, and no unusual activity was reported as is standard. With our audit, our auditors have finished their first draft of the audit, which is excellent. It's looking very good. We are in a good position, and it's a little bit different than what we've seen in the past, so I'm very excited to have a new set of eyes and a little bit different approach. Even though all of the standard documents are the same, we have the statements, the notes, the backup information, all that's more or less the same, but there's just a little bit different approach to it. And one thing I'd recommend to the select board is that once we do wrap up with the final draft of the audit, after I accept it, I hope the board will invite the auditors to a select board meeting to talk to you and to the public about the audit, what they found, what their recommendations are, and what they, you know, what they saw as a new auditor coming in after we've had the same one for, I think it was five or eight years. It was a long time, so...
And it's so timely.
Well, yeah, it's still passed when I wanted it, but we had trouble with the prior auditor getting us information, so we made the right decision, I think, to move ahead with the new outfit, and they've been very good and very responsive. So, the last thing, as far as ongoing work, Trio Software, as you know, is our accounting software. It had been antiquated based on a very old version of some kind of like an access database or something. It was quite antiquated, but they're updating it, and we are moving forward with a new version of that same software. So it won't be a totally new interface for us, but it'll be quite different. So we're going to start off with a trial version of that in March. It won't be live, it'll be practice data, so we can play around with it, get comfortable with it, do reporting and things like that.
Are you going to try to run a dual thing, or...
At some point, we likely will have two instances, you know, one old and one new running. But for right now, everybody will have access to that test model, so we can go through and get familiar with it. And then we'll have to do some work on converting data and then switching over. So I expect it'll be sometime prior to the end of the fiscal year that we'll have that transition completed. I hope certainly before the end of the fiscal year, so... As far as comments on the year-to-date and the month of January, we should be about 58%, excuse me, percent expended on average. We do see that posted journals are up relative to where they were last year and even for the month of January, and I attribute that to what I saw. We're a lot more online payments being made, and so when we have online payments, we have to do a separate journal to record them. And so that's been kind of adding a little bit of activity, which isn't a bad thing, I don't think. We also see in this report that revenues and expenses are both up for the year-to-date. However, in a positive turn, the revenues do exceed the expenditures, so we're looking good in that area. And then I wanted to point out one anomaly as far as interest on taxes in the month of January. This is when we start to see a lot of back taxes coming in because the foreclosure deadline, we're talking about some of that tonight, is the 22nd of this month in February. So we had a lot of past due taxes come in, and with that, a lot of interest on those past due taxes. So it's a little bit weird to see $6,000 come in at once, but we had some big accounts that were paid off. So that's good news as well, I guess, yeah. And a few other things in here, but those have been talked about previously as far as anomalous numbers, looking at the capital reserves and things. So, other than that, everything looks pretty standard. Always can be things that catch your eye, but if you have any questions at all now or after the meeting, just please let me know, and I'll do my best to answer it.
It all looks good, and we appreciate having all the information and the fact that it's online for everyone to see.
Yep.
Terrific.
Amen.
All right, thank you. Well, that's my reporting.
We had all the boards and committees here earlier, and we want to thank the Conservation Commission for their 6, 12, 10, 9, 11, 13, and 12, 12 minutes. Solid Waste and Recycling, their October 17th, and the Cobbe See Watershed District minutes of December 11th. And we don't have any public for public communications, so we'll go on to appointments, reappointments, and resignations, and consider the resignation of Emily Roderick from the Planning Board.
I would make a motion to approve the resignation of Emily Roderick from the Planning Board. She submitted a note to us that her schedule has become unmanageable, and she just doesn't have time to continue. So we'd like to thank her for her service and wish her well.
I second that.
I have a motion and a second. Any other discussion? All those in favor?
And of course, that means we have an opening now.
Yes.
That's right. No, hang on, wait. We're going to our statistician over in the other table. She's telling us.
She was an alternate, so we do have the alternate positions open.
Ah.
So the alternate position is open.
That's right. Alternate positions open. Thank you so much from the control booth.
Are we going to post that?
Yep.
Yep.
Already posting.
Already post.
Control booth, all the way.
Dennis, you've been commentating too many sports, I think.
Yeah, I know, right? It's like, excuse me, we're going live.
New business.
Yes.
Consider requesting a traffic and speed study on North Road. Eric?
All right. So for a number of years, and well before my time, I think, we've had concerns about traffic on North Road as it relates to the transfer station, so much so at one point that the new access road was put in to help address issues of site distance and other concerns at the old entrance. So this is not a new issue. However, we have seen increased traffic with the inclusion of Fayette in our regional facility. They've been an asset, but there are impacts. And even before Fayette, there were concerns about speeding and turning traffic there, but I think it has been exacerbated somewhat by having additional traffic there. And I've seen it myself. You pull out of there, and if you're not going fast enough, somebody will go in the other lane, fly by you, and then slam on the brakes as soon as they get to Route 17. It's just something about that area. And so there is a lot of high speed, and there's a lot of issues with folks just not recognizing or being considerate enough of all of the traffic that's stopping and turning at that road. So one of the things that we have done in the past is requested traffic studies from the DOT. And this is a little bit unique because I took the liberty of suggesting that perhaps, even though it's a state-aid road, that the town of Reedfield may be interested in helping to support any improvements, traffic calming measures at that intersection. And that's something that I definitely hope the board can discuss and consider, but I think that would help incentivize some of those things potentially happening, so that it's really a two-part request. Help us understand what's going on there and how we might fix it, and then fixing it. Because I think it only is a matter of time. I've had several citizen complaints over the last few weeks. That's what prompted this, and I then brought it to the Solid Waste and Recycling Committee, who voted to support moving forward with this request. And I think it's just time. It's time to make this happen, and so I'm looking to the board to support this request.
What do you need from us? Do you need a motion?
I appreciate a motion and a vote to send this off to DOT, knowing that I have, at least initially, suggested that if something can be done, that we'd like to be a partner in making that happen with DOT.
I'd like to make a motion to authorize the town manager to act on behalf of the select board in sending a request for a traffic and speed study on North Road where it hits 17 near the bus garage RSU 38 and near the transfer station.
And we know that it might be a cost to that...
Yes, and that's whatever we authorize that.
We'll come back to that if something comes up, but I just wanted to make sure that you knew that I said, you know, going into this...
We moved to, yes, we moved to authorize that.
So we're moving the letter that Eric has presented.
Yes. We are moving to authorize him to send that letter on our behalf.
I'll second that.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. Any more discussion? All those in favor?
Thank you, thank you.
Yeah. North Road. North Road is, and you know what it is, too? I think, if I may proffer just an idiot's opinion, you, most of North Road is wide open, and so you're going up, you know, and you're going this way, and you're going up, and you're going around. And so you are so used to driving these big, wide-open places, and people are going to just, they're going to hammer it and do 60 down through there. And so once you get, and you're like, oh, civilization, you know, I'm not out in... Then I think that's what happens in that little stretch, because it is, I absolutely agree. Sometimes I'm like, I'm just going to wait. I'm going to wait. It's not worth getting T-boned. I'm just going to wait.
What does it drop to at the transfer station?
35.
35?
Just prior.
I think it's just prior, and I'm not...
Probably needs to be farther back with some signage that says, you know...
Turning vehicles or...
Turning vehicles or commercial entrance ahead or something.
Yeah, yeah. We can do something with the signage. That's an easy one, I think. You know, things I'm thinking about perhaps might even be a speed table or some kind of pavement marking or texturing to just let people know stuff's happening here, and we need to slow down.
I like that.
You know, but...
Well, even without the transfer station and the bus garage, sometimes people come up to that, and I know for years the stop signs have been hidden by trees, and it's a T. And people just come, and they're just like, wah! To stop for 17, I mean, no, not even thinking about stopping earlier.
You're sitting there thinking, he's going to run into me.
Yeah, yeah, absolutely. Absolutely.
I can't pull out, and he's going to run into me.
It's multi-pronged.
I agree. I think it also, I appreciate it because it's a proactive, you know what I mean? Let's not wait until something's bad. Let's do something that we can get ahead of it.
And they have those strips that you can bolt down and take up in winter?
Absolutely, yeah, yeah. Yeah, there's a lot of things out there. Me even putting in a, you know, a little median and pushing out the traffic a little bit, I mean, anything. And DOT will help come up with some of those recommendations.
Excellent. Thank you, thank you, thank you.
All right. Okay. Consider pending real estate foreclosures. Once again, we'll give it to Eric.
All right. So it's that time of year, unfortunately, where we have to collect taxes past due from 2016. So that's one of the first things I want to point out, is that the foreclosure process takes a very long time, several years. And so we have been working with property owners to try to get these issues addressed. Some have come forward for abatement requests and had their issues, their taxes abated. Others have not, and I'm never quite sure what decisions people make or why, but we find ourselves with, actually, today we had several come in, so we're down to just about a half dozen properties. And I think that of those, I'm looking to see another three or four, hopefully, paid for in the next day, tomorrow, and only maybe one or two going to the very last minute. However, there's always a chance that we may end up foreclosing on a property, and one of the things that we are required to do per our policy and the administrative ordinance that references our tax-acquired property policy, we have to review anything that's coming up to make sure that the town doesn't take on a property that has liabilities. Environmental health and sanitation could be even something as small as having, you know, too many occupants in a building. We want to make sure that if the town does acquire property, which is always what we don't want to do, but if we do, that we're doing the right thing for the community. So our policy requires that the code officer and town manager review parcels that may be potentially foreclosed on. And so we did that this year, as we have in years past, and Cliff Buck has been filling in for Gary for the past week or so, and he went ahead and did the visual inspection. I've done an administrative review and have seen several of these properties as well, but not all of them firsthand. And so this year, one of the things in your packet is a, beyond the copy of the reference documents, is a Town of Reedfield pre-foreclosure inspection form. So this is a new tool that I put together that basically takes the criteria that are established in the tax-acquired property policy and put it in a form that I can hand to the code officer, say, here, these are the criteria, we want to have all this stuff reviewed. And so Cliff did that, and essentially I have provided to the select board, not included with the packet for privacy reasons, the information on the properties, six of them that I believe are potentially, will be foreclosed on. As I said, I hope that we can get through it and not have any, but the results of that review are included in those documents. And the recommendation that came from Cliff and myself is that we didn't find anything that was particularly onerous as far as liability issues. There was one property that had some junk vehicles and some other items, but we believe that if the town were to foreclose on that, the cost of cleaning it up would not be an issue relative to the resale value, and the act of cleaning up the property would actually make a difference to neighboring properties and their value. So we see it as a, even though it's a master cleanup, not necessarily as a liability. So we've recommended that the select board move ahead and not intervene by issuing a waiver form for any of those properties based on the criteria that we were charged with reviewing.
And a couple of these, they say possession may be difficult. Is that just...
When the homes are occupied, it does add another set of challenges. However, if and when the town forecloses, one of the options we have is to not take possession immediately, to just simply allow folks that are living there to live there and try to work something out. Also, of course, we do have a redemption period. Once a property is foreclosed on, we have a 30-day period whereby the property owner or other parties can pay the past due taxes as well as taxes for other subsequent years. So in this case, we'd be looking at them paying 2016, 2017, and 2018 taxes, as well as any interest, penalties, and fees. And once that's paid in whole, they can reclaim the property or redeem it. So that's what we call the redemption period in our policy. There's a different redemption period in statute for the state, but that's our redemption period.
But if they pay their 2016 taxes before the 22nd, that would take care of the immediate problem.
That would take care of the immediate issue, and then they can have much more time and much more ability to pay future years over time. So again, it's not a good situation to have what you owe triple. So we do try very hard to get folks to come in and pay that before foreclosure.
And that's 4 o'clock Friday afternoon?
3:30 on Thursday.
3:30 on Thursday.
22nd, yeah.
So the 22nd is that day, the morning of, the actual deadline is 3:30 PM on the 21st.
21st, okay.
So we foreclose on the 22nd. I mean, technically, we foreclose at 3:30 on Thursday, but it's simpler to just say on the 22nd.
It's very important to have the exact time, so if somebody's trying to get here or arranging a loan or whatever...
If I remember correctly, there were no foreclosures in Reedfield last year.
There were none. We had two the year before, one of which was a probate issue, and that was one where we had tenants, we had folks that were renting the property that we had foreclosed on, and we just let it sit while we worked with the bank, or with the lawyers, trying to sort out the probate issue, and it worked out just fine.
And for the record...
They paid for the, the heirs paid for that, the taxes, and got that back.
Absolutely, yeah. And that was ideal. And the other one was the one that we foreclosed on from a bank, which I, you know...
Was vacant at the time.
Was vacant at the time, yeah.
Yeah, I just, for the record, I would state that I do, no one, I think, and I don't speak for the whole board, but certainly, real estate is not the business of the Town of Reedfield. And I would commend you and everyone else who tries really hard to take a weird and uncomfortable situation and make it as tolerable and as dignified as possible. So I just, I appreciate that, and I know that sometimes we lose track of that kindness amongst all of the noise.
I think in Reedfield, we've been very conscious of that.
Yeah, have to be.
We really don't want to put anybody out of their home.
No, we don't want to sell the real estate, we don't want to buy real estate. We do a very good job.
And the most important piece of that is communication, that if there is anyone out there listening, who knows of someone or you yourself, you need to get in touch with the town office if you're one of these property owners and find out what options are still open to you before the close of business on Thursday.
There's no shame in that game, because it's worth it, and we want you to be here. We want you to be here.
And unfortunately, after that day, all the taxes are due.
Right, all the taxes up to and including the current taxes. So it takes all three years that you're behind and makes them due within 30 days.
So if you can pay for the 2016 taxes, then you've got yourself another year to...
To try and square away. So you don't need any action from us currently, correct?
No, unless you, unless you wanted to discuss, I mean, the option is there for the board to offer a waiver for any one of these properties that, and these weren't the complete list of properties that were potentially foreclosed on. These are the ones that looked like they may have had some likelihood of foreclosure or likelihood of a liability. So, but you do have that option, so if you choose to take no action, that's certainly sufficient.
I have no need for action. Do you, Dennis?
No action necessary.
No.
Everything you presented was very straightforward, and I loved the forms being filled out.
Yes, that was fun.
That was very easy to read through.
Good, good.
Much simpler than in the past. So thank you to you and Cliff. I wish Gary a good recovery.
Yes.
You'll get us, keep us updated, let us know if we have no foreclosures?
Yeah, I will. I, this year, I'm not overly optimistic. I think we might have one or two, but there's one that's just land that we haven't been able to get in touch with the owner. There's one that actually, they have two mortgage holders, but both banks went under, so I'm guessing that they got into some bad loans, and those, through those banks, one of them was fined millions of dollars by the FTC or whoever manages that. And actually, I ended up chasing down the new banks who had acquired those... that. And actually, I ended up chasing down the new banks who had acquired those loans, but then they had in turn sold them to somebody else. So, I could not even get to the banks to say, hey, hey, banks, you know. So, it's, it's never easy, and unfortunately, we just don't have the resources to work with some of those. I mean, the banks say, we sold it, we can't tell you who we sold it to. And that's the end of it. So, it, it's, anyway.
Well, we do the very best that we can, and we just want to make sure that everybody knows that that is the direction of the board to the town manager and from the town manager to his employees.
Yes, absolutely.
Okay. Consider a process for select board vote or comment on pending state legislation. I guess Bruce sent an email to Eric, and Eric sent it to us. Has anybody got any comments about that, or?
I thought that was a great idea. I'm thankful for John for suggesting it, and to Bruce for passing it forward. I can't remember if Bruce put it in this note or in a separate note, his own personal opinion.
He's got it.
It was in here. I, so, what I'm comfortable with, and I guess we will be putting something on for our next meeting?
That's the intent, is that we would look at legislation that's pending that might be timely and take a vote, perhaps.
I think anything that addresses something that benefits or affects the entire town as a population.
Revenue sharing is a good thing.
Right, would definitely be something we should comment on. I think things, subjects where people could have a diverse
I agree with that.
set of opinions, it's probably not up to us to make a public statement.
But if it's going to be extra funds for the town, or it's going to do something for the town, that...
Right, if it has to do with roads, pretty much anything with funding.
Yeah, related to the municipal operations, which...
That...
I think it would be great for us to be able to make a statement and have a letter sent off to our state representatives.
Because that Legislative Policy Committee that I was on, we address all of these bills that are going through, and they go in grassroots, and they represent the way we voted. But it's, every town's not agreeing on how you're going to...
Right.
So, I think our own voice saying...
Would be useful.
Yeah, is this such a, I mean, I don't, I mean, it just seems like a normal thing, but like, we're just basically saying we would like to have input on what you're voting on? I mean, yes?
That's what it sounds like to me. I mean, I think it's...
Or re-support your actions in your bill.
Okay.
I mean...
And, and we can do that as representatives, as the select board. Yeah, it, it makes sense to me. I didn't think there was anything out of the ordinary.
And Craig Hickman and Shanabellus have always said, let us know, let us know.
Oh, absolutely, absolutely.
So, you'll let them know.
Yep.
And we're, we're fixing to.
Yep. That's great. Okay. So, you'll bring something forward next?
Yeah, and, and you're still on the LPC, right, Chris?
No, I'm not.
You're not. Who's on the LPC now?
After my term was up, I forget who, I forget who was elected. But we should find out who that is.
Yeah, it might have been Bruce, but I'll, I'll check. Anyway, I'll check with the board and see if anybody has any pet legislation, or however you want to put it, anything that they think is worth commenting on, and I'll pull together a list. I'll also try to reach out to our representatives and see if they have anything that they see that we should be commenting on.
Because she, Shanabellus, lots of times, she asks you to come out and be there when she's presenting something.
Yeah, absolutely, to speak on behalf, or, or just to show your support by being there, yeah. Okay, yeah, so we'll, we'll put that together.
Okay.
And when is our next meeting? Official select board meeting? I know we're going to meet next Monday at the library for a tour, and then on Thursday night with the Budget Committee?
We are, our next meeting is on March 4th. So, actually, it repeats the February schedule, because there are 28 days in February.
Okay, except for, we'll meet on Monday.
We'll meet on Monday, on the second one.
What time Monday are we doing this?
Oh, on...
The library.
This coming, the library. We have fire station, so, and I should have mentioned that in my report, actually, for anybody that is interested budget-wise or operation-wise, we're, we're having a open house walkthrough of our fire station and the library to talk about proposed improvements and expenditures in this coming budget year for those two significant capital assets the town has and is looking to invest in. So, further, so we have Monday, the 25th, at 6:00 PM, we'll have a half-hour walkthrough at the fire station. Chief Mank will be there and talk about what his needs are, and then we'll move on to the library and have a walkthrough of, of that building and talk about some of the issues they're facing and what their needs are. So, I think it's going to be a great precursor to the joint capital planning meeting between the Select Board and Budget Committee, Thursday, the, yeah, 21st.
No, the 28th.
Twenty, 28th, yes. Thursday, the 28th. Here at the town office at 6:30. So, those are the two upcoming meetings, and then the Select Board meeting, as you said, was Monday, March 4th.
Okay. So, we'll be at the fire station at 6:00 and the library at 6:30-ish?
Yeah, yeah.
And about a half hour each?
About a half hour each, and if I get a chance, I might try to squeeze in a little walk up to the...
That's the 28th, you said?
Oh, the...
No, the 25th.
The 25th, yeah.
The day we go back to work.
Okay, that's Monday, the 25th.
Monday, the 25th.
Yeah, the 28th is the budget meeting, Select Board and Budget.
You're trying to squeeze a walk-in up to the...
Up to the, the post office, so we can look at the traffic and parking issue right there. That's been kind of plaguing the town for, for years, as far as, used to be, people would do nose-in parking, now they do broadside most of the time, but still some nose-in. Visibility is still a problem. The Age Friendly Committee, actually, that's one of the things Romain didn't mention, was really eager to try to address that issue. They organized a meeting between the DOT, myself, the Age Friendly Committee, and the owners of the buildings in that area. So, that's a big project. And I think it's, it's a good thing we're starting to put a lot more focus and energy downtown. I'm glad the Enterprise Committee is getting involved. I think that, you know, there's some things happening that can really make that little part of Reedfield better. So, anyway, that's my extended response to your simple question.
That's okay, thank you.
All right. Consider a revised proposal for police dispatching services. Once again, we'll go to Eric.
All right. So, a month ago, we had Sheriff Ken Mason, Kennebuck County Sheriff, come and present a proposal for dispatching services to basically fill the void that was left by what was going to be a discontinuation of services through the regional communication center. Since that time, we've had a couple of discussions, and there was actually some movement on the part of other communities that were going to be affected by this, most notably Gardner, who would be in a really bad position if RCC was to no longer provide the services that they have been. And so, we also got together last Thursday, I think it was, and had a meeting. I think it was most everybody in Kennebuck County sent somebody, either a town manager, or a police chief, or some representative, to talk about another option that would allow all of our communities to work together to provide service that was consistent and centrally located, and not to split off and have communications, some of them happening at RCC, some communities being left to go on their own, and some communities moving to work with the City of Augusta. Although it would be a less costly option, the general consensus at that meeting was that, and this includes the consensus with the Kennebuck County Sheriff, that a better option would be to stay with RCC and set up a separate module, a separate desk, to manage communications, using the, the software that, that they are not currently able to, to manage. So, what, what this really comes down to is a software question, and the software used for dispatching services for emergency responding, 911 calls, and also some police dispatching. Unfortunately, we, there was, there's no real clear path forward to go one direction or the other. We have two competing softwares. The county uses one software, RCC uses another. Several other dispatching entities in the state use different software. So, the proposal that we have before us, basically, instead of trying to pick one or the other, does both. And unfortunately, that does raise the cost even more. So, we were looking at originally a $3,000 round number increase, and with the new proposal, we're looking at a $7,000 increase, from a $15,000 and change base, so almost 50% increase for us.
Yeah.
I don't necessarily like it, but I think the, the best option at this point is to move forward as a collective group, not fraction, or fracture ourselves and separate out this group, that group, and the other group, and work with the proposal that Gardner has put forward. They're chipping in extra money. There's a strong interest, and I'm sure it's going to be acted upon, to reform a, a policy committee to look at regional communication in Kennebuck County, and to try to fix this problem and address some of these issues with the competing software, over the next three years. Lee Mank and I discussed this today. You know, again, we both don't like the cost, and we're thinking that one option might be to try to push for a little bit more money coming from Gardner, because it does look like we're offsetting some of their costs. And I don't know if that $185,000 they offered is all they can offer, or, or if there's some room for negotiation, but even without the negotiation, or even without getting more money from them, I think this is probably the best option. The sheriff believes this is the best option, but I think that we can try to push for some more money somehow, or at least, you know, some other arrangement to try to make this less costly for the town. But that, that's my summary. It's not a pretty picture, but I, I think that the regional effort probably warrants this for the near future, for the short term, until we can get the politics figured out and, you know, try to move forward as a group.
You think the, the bulk of these towns would all go together and...
Yeah, especially because Ken Mason did, did a wonderful thing by trying to come up with a solution. You know, unfortunately, it, it, it wouldn't work for everybody. And what we have here works for everybody, and with something as important as communication that, that does happen between, between agencies, more, more fracturing isn't a good thing. So, I, I...
Is this the best we can do? I mean, with all the handcuffs, is this the best we can do?
I think this is the best we can do with less any effort to get more resources from the towns, not just Gardner, but maybe Vassalboro and some of the other ones, that are more impacted by this. We're kind of stuck in the, in the tide. We're going in and out with the tide, getting rolled across the rocks, and...
This has been weird, even when he was explaining it, it was weird. To, to, like, the way that these, the sub sort of G, like, it's like its own little, like, econosphere, these, these, like, dispatching service that goes to Somerset, that bounces down here, and it's like, I, I just, it's bizarre. Maybe it's because it's so bizarre that they have just, that, that this happened, but as long as, is it the best we can do, people are still safe, and when they call 911, they can count on somebody to be there, that's good. But it's, you know, it's like, no more price gouging.
Well, I'm concerned. I read the whole article that was in the Kennebuck Journal, and it was lengthy.
Yeah.
And it was very detailed. And I guess Gardner being sort of hung out to dry, they were looking at like $400,000, I think?
I think more than that. They were, they were looking at a major annual expense.
So, I'm, I, I thought, when I was reading the article, I was okay with the $185,000 that they said they put forth as a flat fee, and that would keep, that would take a big chunk out of the increase for everybody to be there. But now that the increase is double, and it's a 50% increase for our towns, personally, I think all the small towns should go back and say to Gardner, you guys need to pony up more. And my question would be, why is Gardner so intensive in terms of money and in terms of use? Are they that big?
Uh, yeah.
What is special?
They, they are. They're a very large town, one of the largest in Kennebuck County. They're also a, a service center. They have a, a density of housing that, that you don't see outside of really Augusta in Kennebuck County. So, there's a couple reasons. They, they have some high, high, high buildings. They've had some terrible fires. Their infrastructure, their infrastructure needs are a little bit different. So, there's, there's a couple reasons. But I think that, again, it comes down to just putting regionalization of communication services, setting that as a priority, and it's going to hurt in the short term, but I think in the long term, it's the best thing.
So, my understanding from the article and from what you have said is that the committee was disbanded because really no one was interested in being on it, and so now that's, that's being pushed to come, that's being pushed to come back together.
Yeah.
Is this a timed contract? So, is this a three-year proposal?
Gardner's committed to, I think, up to three years, from what they had said at the meeting on, last week. They're hoping, I think others are hoping, that we can try to sort this out in less than that, maybe two years. With the, with the added cost of this, there's a lot of incentive for everybody in Kennebuck County to come together and figure this out, and work with the state, because a lot of this comes down to the fact that, you know, we used to have consolidated dispatching services for Kennebuck County, and then it went away. And the reasons for that, I'm not entirely familiar with, but I think that we need to get back to something like that, just for the safety and continuity. But, but again, the fact that we separated when it went the other direction, now we have these two competing softwares. And I really, you know, I blame the software companies, the, the culture around software. We see it with our accounting software. You know, it costs $20,000 a year for accounting software. It's gouging, but you have these companies that, that they have very little competition. They're owned by venture capitalist companies, and they're there to make a buck. And if they can squeeze it out of you, they will. And we have two of those companies right now that are competing, and, and it's just, it's caused a nightmare situation for us, where it's a huge expense to go with either one of them. And then the, the switching and the conversion is going to be problematic. So, it's just a...
This is like a Microsoft, Apple.
Yeah.
Yeah.
But it's all in Greek. Like, I just don't understand the, you know, it's like, they don't all, it's all the same dispatch, you know, they're all, they're serving the same purpose, but it's two different companies, and it's like...
Right, two different software.
Yeah, as long as this is the best thing we can do, I'm okay with it. I hate that the cost has been so inflated, but it seems like that's where we are.
Well, I, I think when Ken was here, he made a point of letting us know that he was coming to let us know the information. It wasn't that we got a, a choice in actually choosing, because whatever the county went with is what we were going to have. So, I'm thinking this is the same way, yes. This is what everybody's agreed to go with. The only thing that could possibly change is the way the cost is shared.
Yes.
So, I'm all for asking Gardner to bear a harder, a larger share. I think that would be fine.
Do you need any action from us?
You know, I, I don't. I just, your understanding and support when we get to the budget process, because this is going to be a hard one. In the grand scheme of things, it's not that big, but it's big enough that it's, it's important. And it's one of those things, one of the managers at the, the meeting last week, or some other discussion I had, put it very well, this is kind of one of those unintended consequences of home rule. When everybody gets to pick who they go with, you sometimes have these odd outcomes, and, and that's kind of what happened. We all kind of separated, and so, regionalization comes with, with benefits, it comes with costs. So, this is, you know, part of that big debate, I guess.
And bottom line is what Dennis has been promoting all night.
Yeah.
In the last eight minutes, or whatever. It's, it's safe for our citizens, and it provides the service that we're accustomed to, in the manner we're accustomed to receiving it.
Yeah.
And so, we will pay the extra. But if you have a chance to let them know that we would like a smaller share, I think that is...
Yeah. So, I guess I would appreciate a motion to support that, now that I think about it, the, the new proposal. Again, it's not like we have a whole lot of choice, but as far as, you know, setting our position, I think it's important.
Is it again to authorize you to act on our behalf for that, or?
They've got it right in here.
Okay.
Yeah.
So, I'll make a motion that the Town of Reedfield supports staying with the MRCC for the next three years, until the board determines how the issue can be resolved.
The board being the...
The Emergency Communications Board.
Thank you, just wanted to clarify that, yeah. Thank you, just wanted to clarify that, yeah.
I second that motion.
Any discussion? All those in favor? Okay.
Thank you.
We got five minutes, does anybody want to discuss anything?
No, but thank you to you and Bruce for scheduling with Eric, the meeting for the fire department and library. That's wonderful.
I think that will be informative, and we'll get a cemetery one on the books, too.
Yeah, and at some point, we should do a, you know, through the transfer station and, and public, um, public buildings there, the, uh, we have a couple of...
And then a roads tour.
A roads tour, yeah.
Well, that, that's, you know...
That's our biggest infrastructure right there, are the roads.
I mean, I can tell when we leave Reedville, because the road deteriorates.
Oh, yeah.
That is very true.
Have we had money washout problems? I know quite a few roads around have.
We had some delamination on, on South Road that was reported to me, right at the intersection with 17. In the past, we had some at Surtivan Hill in the fall, but that was patched.
That was the going down the hill?
Yeah, yeah, it seems like we've got these little areas where there was like, you know, the apron from Route 17 didn't extend far enough, and our paving didn't expend, extend all the way to Route 17, so it's, it's two of the very same areas. Part of it's the turning traffic and the steepness of the hill.
Yeah.
That causes a lot of that, it, those issues, but part of it, I think, is just that we just haven't had our aprons extend far enough, so, less than that.
But we didn't have any, with the, the big thaw we had a number of weeks ago, I noticed, like on 17, there are a lot of places where the gravel has riveted away.
Yeah.
Yeah, we had a couple, Turch Road was one.
This is a, this is a killer winter for roads.
Yeah.
Yeah, because not only do we have the freezing thaw, then we had that downpour.
Yeah.
Right, so it's, it, not only are they getting soft and mushy, but they're being washed away.
Away, yeah.
It's, it's a, yeah, there's got to be, like, this is where that, I'm sorry, we're, we're not talking, I'd make a motion to adjourn.
I'm thankful for our roads and all we've done for them, and I'll second your motion.
All those in favor?